There was too much in one session.
We're partnering.
Okay, board members, we're gonna continue with the next topic. And I'll be managing dispersion over the work session. That since we are about 100 minutes behind our schedule, we'll try to make that up at least 50% of that, that we have a 2 and 1/2 hour set aside initially, you know, set aside for dispersion, but was supposed to end by 4:30, which means we have 15 minutes. I know that's a stretching, but we'll do our best. You know, the board members become more efficient in their use of time as we come to a later part of the afternoon, because we all have a certain deadline to meet for the community events and other things. So with that, I'm gonna turn the thing over to Mr. Greenfelder. I just want you to know that some of you may have hard copies of our presentation materials, but we do have most updated material on the bull dock. So throw away what you have as a paper copy.
No, this is the newest one.
They just got a brand new one. We were able to do that.
Which you did not. Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you. Disregard what I said.
Well, thank you for having us here. We've got an exciting group. I'd like to introduce everybody up at the table. Betris and I will take you through this fairly quickly, but I wanted to introduce Darwin Barker from Sandberg Middle School, Dustin Wright from Old Creek Elementary School, and Kim Retzer from South Lakes High School, three of our fantastic principals. And thank you guys for being here. I know it's a hectic day with trainings and things going on back in the buildings. And introducing the Region Five team, which is a little bit different than what we've done in the past, so certainly led by Becky Baneig, Dave Jagels, and Eric McCann is the Region Five team. And I know some of my folks, because I know we went over, may have to leave, but if the Region Five team could please stand in the back, just so the board can see who you are. I know some of you have childcare arrangements and things like that, so if you need to go, scoot out, but we'll get to that piece in a little bit. Before we started, the two people I did want to recognize really, really quick, and then we'll turn it over to Betris, are Stephanie Gerald and Jennifer Lemp, two of our coordinators in OSS that, quite frankly, all the success and everything that we're able to accomplish, and I don't throw out those compliments lightly, are 100% them. I'm fortunate to be able to work with them.
All right. So with that, it's my pleasure to take you quickly, promptly, through a high-level overview of our school accountability. And this is a supplement to the detailed walkthrough that each of you received with Mr. Greenfelder up to this point. So it's high-level, it'd be quick, but hopefully reinforce some of what you already know, and kind of an intro into the then look at the way these schools are receiving supports through Project Momentum and our Office of School Support. So for our state and federal accountability systems, just as a reminder, we have a multifaceted accountability system in the state. And really, the ways in which our schools are held accountable in terms of the way in which they're rated are in relation to our Every Student Succeeds Act, or ESSA, for federal accountability, and the Standards of Accreditation, or SOAs, for state accountability. So we'll be looking at both of those. And with the revisions to both of those systems back in 2008, we actually have a much stronger alignment of those systems than we have ever had in the past, which is a really good thing, and you'll see that highlighted as I go quickly through the system. So first of all, for our federal side, we don't spend a lot of time currently looking at our federal side, and it's because we are very successful under the new SS system. But what you'll notice up on the board is that the areas that are measured with performance, progress, and graduation as well of overall school quality, those are measures that carry forward into our SOAs as well. So we'll look at those in more detail when we get to the SOA system. In terms of our overall performance as a division for the ESSA program, the thing that is most important for us to highlight is that for the first time, last year was the first time in 15 years, we had had no schools in this division identified. Yes. That's absolutely, that's all the way back to the inception of NCLB, and I was there at that time, and I was helping to support our first Title I schools that were recognized under that system for sanction. So near and dear to my heart is the fact that we have no schools identified under our ESSA program. And again, that's a huge highlight. ESSA, though, just for our knowledge, does review schools, the state identifies three different levels of schools, and they review annually for making those designations. So that's something, though, that we expect in the future to continue performing very strongly in. Our state system, as you see, many of those same areas that I highlighted for ESSA are again highlighted here for SOAs. Again, we're measuring our academics, the things that are added here, you may notice, our science accountability, as well as dropouts, a measure called College Career Civic Readiness Index, which is rolling in over the next few years. And then you may also, if you're looking really closely, notice that there's a substitution of GCI, or Graduation and Completion Index, where on the federal side, it uses a federal indicator. So again, for our SOAs, our division overall, we're pleased to report, has all of our schools with a level of accreditation identified by the state. With the new SOA system that has come into place, the state very intentionally identified multiple levels of accreditation. And in fact, you'll see here that only that accreditation denied status is considered non-accredited status. One of the reasons why the state made this intentional decision in how they're identifying schools is to recognize both the performance and the improvements that schools are making, and also to lessen that focus on sanction that was held under the old system, where when a school missed a single target by a single point, they were warned, you know, for the foreseeable future. So a very penalty-oriented system was the old approach. The new approach is much more to recognize growth, continuous improvement, and continuous progress in our schools. So that's something that we're pleased to be able to report, and we're pleased that within this system, again, all of our schools have one of those levels of accreditation. Three of our schools are at that accredited with conditions level, and we have appeals pending to the State Board, which will be considered later this week. So we'll be hearing the outcomes of those shortly. For looking in detail at the indicators, and again, I'll go briefly, or I'll go quickly, but if you have questions, obviously you'll have an opportunity to raise those either here, or you can reach out to Mark or myself later for follow-up questions as well. So for the academic indicators, English, math, and science, we have a continuation of our previous SOA system, and we have strong overall performance with only five schools recognized at a Level Two performance, four of those in science, and one in English. Achievement gaps was a new measure that rolled out. This is the first year where achievement gaps is fully implemented. So one thing to recognize as we're moving into this system is that while we have one school, and that's one of our schools that currently has an appeal pending, is the one that is rated at a Level Three. 23 schools recognized at Level Two, but again, the first year of implementation, and as you'll see from Mark's presentation soon, we have a dynamic and robust systematic process for supporting those schools. Oops, here we go. All right. And here is that system. Moving on to chronic absenteeism, so our non-academic indicators, of which we have three currently active, like our achievement gaps, chronic absenteeism, this is the first year that it's fully implemented, but for being a completely new measure, we have only four schools identified at Level Two. And here's a reminder on how that calculation is done, which we've explained in the past in terms of students who are missing full days more than 10% of the year. Schools that are identified as a Level Two, and actually any school that's over a 10% absenteeism rate, receive specialized support from the Office of Intervention and Prevention Services in the Department of Special Services. So they're leading that work and coordinating with other offices and departments to ensure those schools have the resources and supports to intervene proactively and put in place systems to support those absences. Our Graduation and Completion Index, we continue to have strong performance here. We have three schools identified at Level Two. And Graduation Completion Index, graduation as well as dropout are two areas that have been identified as a key focus area within our division leadership, and so we're expecting continued growth in this area in the coming year as we look at new measures and new ways to support. For our dropout rate, this again is the first year this indicator was considered for accountability, and it again is part of that new area of focus for our division. So currently, we have four schools identified at Level Three and four schools identified at Level Two for dropout rate. It's important to keep in mind, because dropout again is something we hadn't really looked at in this way at the state level before. It was reported, but it was, didn't make much news. So as we become more familiar with dropout rate, one thing to note is that to be considered a dropout, the student must have attended at least one day in Fairfax County public schools, period. They must have been a high school student at some point in time in Fairfax County public schools. And then they are students who discontinued school without having received a diploma or a GED or a certificate of completion. Those are the students who are considered as dropouts for this calculation. So both GCI and dropout rate schools that are identified receive coordinated supports from OSS, the region offices, and from the ISD, Office of Counseling College Career Readiness. And again, exciting new resources and exciting new opportunities are really underway through an enhanced system in the Office of School Support that Mr. Greenfelder will be talking to much more about in here in a moment. And just to wrap up, in addition to those detailed reports that you received from Mr. Greenfelder that highlighted the performance areas in each school, information is also available to the public and to you on the Virginia School Quality Profiles. Each school is highlighted that offers their entire accountability profile to include SOA, to include ESSA, as well as other ways to look at school quality. And with that, I'll turn things over to Mr. Greenfelder.
Thank you. Excellent job, as always. Wanted to just start out with, what's our mission? Many of you are familiar with this, but what is it that we focus on in the Office of School Support, especially around Project Momentum? Ensuring high-quality Tier One instruction in all classrooms, building high-performing teams and professional learning communities, and implementing a multi-tiered system of supports to help support all children where they are. These are three really, really important key drivers, and if you remember, over the past few years, we had those five key components. Dr. Persidio led us as a leadership team into really coming up with what's going to be the next slide, which is our overall theory of action. He did a phenomenal job, and sometimes I get caught up in the division making up stuff, and I'm like, I don't know how good this is gonna be. This is one of the best things I've seen in 28 years in Fairfax County. It's fantastic. And that's the theory of action that we have, to continuously improve teaching and student learning in FCPS. And it really takes all those one-offs that we have done and combines it in a really tight, systematic approach that anyone can understand. It's very readable, and it makes good sense, and principals support it, because these are the things they know are gonna drive improvement in their schools. For us, in the Office of School Support, those are the main areas that we focus on, again, building teams, multi-tiered systems of support, high-quality instruction, professional learning. That's kind of our key drivers in this, not that we ignore the others, but there are other offices that are more highly skilled in those areas than us. You'll get more on this, this is kind of a little snapshot and a quick look at it, but it's a very, very powerful document. So how are schools identified? You guys know this, we've been through this, it's really intensive and targeted. Accreditation status is a big piece of it, but now, more than anything, we're really trying to look at significant trend data. What are those schools that we notice may have been performing really, really well, and they're still performing good, but there's been a pretty big drop-off? So now, the regions have the ability to actually tier their own schools in collaboration with OSS, and it provides for a much more robust and targeted group of schools that we can be really strategic with in getting our school support out there. The automatic qualifiers for intensive are two-year accreditation with condition status, and then two consecutive years not meeting state accreditation benchmarks. We're likely to change that this year to one year accredited with conditions, because we feel like we've done a pretty good job over time whittling the list down, and, you know, waiting two years is too late. We need to be, if a school is in even one year, we're gonna give them all the support that they need. You've seen this before. This, I think, shows the success of what we put in and the program that we have. It's been great. I wish I could report, it was flat this year, and we didn't hit zero. We kept the same school, which is the one academic indicator. That school did improve 22 points in math, which was the area that they were accredited with conditions in. It was a phenomenal turnaround, one of the highest improvements in the entire division. They backslid a little bit in ELA, and it was because of subgroups. Actually, their overall pass rate would have got them in yellow and full accredited status. They had two subgroups, and they are getting a tremendous amount of support in those areas, and I am fully confident that they are gonna not only make it in ELA, but they will not backslide in math. You can see that, and the reason we did this second slide is we really have to have a new benchmark, because with the changes in SOAs, we are now gonna have these non-academic indicators. And I didn't, you know, I wanna start out fresh and make sure everybody knows that, you know, we went, you know, I don't wanna say we went backwards, but we have two schools that are in that non-academic indicator that are accredited with conditions, again, pending appeals, and hopefully those work, and then we would be down to zero. What do the intensive schools get? Again, we've done this for a while now, I think the biggest focus is gonna be on the people in the room and talking about that, but, you know, we always prioritize our instructional support. They get an instructional coach, they get some additional funding, they get a lot of access to Title I support. We do a lot in collaboration with Title I, we do a lot of professional development, things like that, where the Title I staff and our staff work jointly, and that's been an extremely positive relationship. We are still very tight on them. We meet with them every month. We do learning walks, where we go into classrooms every month at these schools. They have to basically produce data at every meeting of moving in a positive direction, what are they doing? And we look at that very, very closely. Again, those schools that are intensive, they have teachers that are on extended contracts to do some work and some pre-work in the summer, that's proved to be extremely beneficial. And then HR has continued to be a great support in, with our intensive schools, of looking at them as an individual and seeing if there are certain tweaks and things that we need to do. And that's been, again, very positive. Targeted is not a whole lot different, it's just a little less meetings and a little less support, but really, now, the way that we're structured, the targeted schools are getting more support than they did in the past because of the way the region teams are aligned. So, you know, first, when OSS started, and even before that, when Project Momentum started, you know, the targeted schools were really hard to get any help to, and now we're actually to be able to provide them much more support with the current structure. So we've been very fortunate with that. This is one of my favorite things, I know it drives some people crazy, probably all those teachers in the back that are like, yeah, he really does make us log our hours. I'm sorry, but it's important. And that's how many supports and how many hours, and I guarantee you, that's underestimated for last year. You can see that we put those number of supports into our intensive schools, and then by region, that's how much we break it down. You can see by intensive schools, the hours, you know, 4,100 hours is an awful lot of time to be spending in these schools, and you can see where we provided that support. You know, for us, it's not about what are the teachers doing, it's about us at a higher level being able to look, are we getting the supports where they need to be? You know, are we overlooking something? And that's really what the most important part is. And then, are we giving them the right types of support? So when I look on this and I see planning instruction, boom, working with students, boom, data support, those are the things that we need to be doing. If they were really low and some of these others were high, I'd be like, ooh, we're not really spending our time. So that's really what it's used for, and we use it with our executive principals for school improvement, myself, our leadership team, and we look at this every month to make sure that resources are being deployed in the right area. And for us, it's a good accountability measure. I mean, that's, it works for us. Again, you have a targeted support data in there, and when I look at it, I know what's going on in all these different schools. So for me, when I see some of those blips where it's a little higher, that's where it should be, and that makes me feel like we're making really good analysis. There were some in the past where we would notice they were a little bit down, and it allows us to shift anytime during the year to say, we need to get more supports somewhere. So at this time, I want to turn it over to our honored guests. First, I want to thank all of them, you know, publicly for the incredible support you've given, but if you would, you know, just share with the board, really just a little bit of your journey with the OSS teams that you're working with and some of the support that you've got, because you all have done some amazing work. So with that, if you want to start, Darwin, that'd be great.
Is this on? Yes. All right. Well, first greetings, really honored to have the opportunity to share. So we began a journey at Sandberg Middle School about three years ago. So we had some quasi-support from the Office of School Support last year. I'm officially the targeted Project Momentum school this year, but our journey was to really refine our instructional practices. What we were looking to do is build a sustainable model for instructional improvement, one that will allow students access to an appropriate level of rigor and academic support. We were very intentional about that, but with the support of Mark and Stephanie back there in the back, and a host of teachers who have really, they've come into our school and they've really been part of a family. We really work closely together as a team. We're focused on professional development across the board and really taking a look at our CT expectations. One thing that we've done, we refined our CT expectations to make sure that we have our loose and our tight expectations in place. Just my notes here, sorry about that. So one thing about middle school is that it's really unique. 50% of our population turns over every year. So that whole idea of having a sustainable model and building the capacity within the school is very, very important. With that, we thought about two of our drivers, as I mentioned before, access to rigor, and then appropriate academic support. My job as the principal is really to remove barriers, if you will, that impede high-quality teaching and learning. And with Mark's support and the Office of School Support, we have the financial resources and the human resources in order to do that. Just simply having an additional instructional coach, that I don't have to shift my staffing around in order to provide, is a game changer for us. This year, we have two instructional coaches, so I was able to streamline the support in math and English, which is excellent for us. Also, this is our third year of implementing the math workshop model, just today, our school planning day, we had differentiated professional development led in collaboration with our instructional coaches as well as Office of School Support. We had our math teachers were in our building, English teachers were over at Stone Middle School, and then the rest of our staff was engaged in learning innovation in our building. We've accessed support from multiple levels, the ESOL support, data support, special education, English, and math. What I really like to think about with Office of School Support, they are thinking partners with us. Where we can sit down and we can collaborate with one another, they really allow me to, for my vision for instructional improvement, to really take hold in the building, and that's what's been most important. And finally, here, I would offer that just with the support that we had last year, we saw measurable gains in the students with disabilities category in mathematics, as well as our African-American students. And that was a game changer for us, when we really could see the support that we received from Office of School Support, and it really paid dividends, because I don't like to look at a lot of percentages, for the purposes of data, of course, we do that, but behind every percentage, that's one of our students. That's one of our students, and we want to make sure that our students have an opportunity to realize the portrait of a graduate. And in order to do that, we want to make sure that they have access to rigor, as I said before, and then the appropriate academic support, those multi-tiered systems of support in place. Thanks.
Thank you, Darwin, and thank you to the board for having us here today. I can relate to a lot of what Darwin said, and especially that idea of family and relationships, which I'll address in a minute. We've been fortunate at Old Creek to work with Office of School Support and specifically the Region Five team in several ways. Throughout the year, we did lab site rotations for all seven of our grades. We've done a lot of work on refining our data dialogue practices, a lot of work in bolstering our efforts around MTSS practices at Old Creek. And then even down to, at the end of the year, I had OSS team members coming in, working one-on-one with students as we were making a final push. I would say the three things that stick out to me from our experience last year, and that has continued even more this year, is the level of expertise that we see, the external perspectives that we gain, and you'll think that we were trading notes, but this idea of being thought partners, I can definitely connect with that. With the level of expertise, what I mean by that is, I see it in two ways, and the impact that had at Old Creek. We have, on these teams, we have tremendously knowledgeable team members that can really help us out with specific questions about language arts or math instruction. They can really help us get the quick answers that we need. But they also have a high-level expertise, if you think about technical skills and adaptive skills, they're really excellent at working with adults, because at the end of the day, this group of people are helping the adults in our building help the students in our building. And so those two types of expertise has been really profound in helping shift our practices and move everything forward. That second idea of this external perspective that they can bring, I think one of the things that we're able to do in Fairfax County, because of the number of schools and the different schools, is there's lots of resources to share, there's lots of different ways to do things, but it's difficult from my chair at Old Creek to know all of those things. So we have the good fortune of this team that knows best practices that are happening all throughout the region or the division. They're able to go, oh, I know a fourth-grade team, just like your fourth-grade team, and here's what we did to address this specific problem. So that idea of that external perspective and bringing those resources that are available throughout our division in an efficient way and an impactful way into our building has been really, really meaningful to us. And just the idea of having an external perspective, hey, what are you seeing? You haven't been, you're not here at Old Creek every day, what are you seeing? That helps on a micro level of just as they're coming in for a meeting, or on a macro level of how are we here in January as compared to when you were first here in September. And then the last thing I would say is this thinking partner, I've really benefited personally, and then I know the instructional leaders in our building, and our staff has benefited from the work that the team has done in terms of a coaching model, helping us get better at our jobs by helping us think through what we're doing, why we're doing it. I would also say that they did a great job in a very positive way of pushing our practices. Hey, here's where you're doing well, and here's how we can grow even more, in areas where we needed to get better, but also areas where we exhibited some strengths. I think the through line through all those things that I just said are the relationships that we were able to develop. I had OSS team members at Old Creek on the fourth day of school, and they walk in and they know the secretaries, and they know our staff, and those relationships, all those things that we were just saying, they can deliver that expertise, they can deliver that external perspective with the context of what we need at Old Creek, and then also how it fits in with what we're trying to do as a division. So those are some of the things that have really stuck out, that made a big difference in helping us grow at Old Creek.
Good afternoon, thank you for having us here today. At South Lakes, we're in our first year of the journey of being a Project Momentum targeted school, so a lot, there's been a lot new for me, even though I've been principal for a number of years. We originally were gonna be identified as a school with academic needs around math. My math teachers pulled it through and got some really strong scores, but we are struggling with dropout rates. And so we are identified as a Project Momentum targeted school, and it's probably the best thing that's ever happened. The resources that we would not have had, and we have not had, have been plentiful. The financial support to have an instructional coach, which we've never had at South Lakes before, has been amazing. Today, we were doing breakout sessions this morning. Today, we were doing breakout sessions this morning, we did one on computer-based assessments. So I was listening to your FCPSON conversation, thinking about our PD today, and one of my teachers said to the coach, my instructional coach who was providing the PD, we're really glad we have you. And that's for high school teachers to embrace an instructional coach, and someone coming onboard from the outside is really refreshing to hear. The support that we were given to really spend time this summer to make sure that our school improvement plan was very focused, that we're identifying the areas that we need. We've put a lot of time and structure into developing our MTSS. South Lakes has been a project-aware school, and so we've been working with Ruler and some of those supports. We are very focused on the mental wellness piece over the last couple of years, and then getting into behavior and academics is an area we're still trying to cultivate, make sure that we have the supports that we need around that tier-one instruction, and the supports we've gotten through Project Momentum have really allowed us to focus in that area. So the OSS team comes in, the dropout rate is where our big area of focus is, and Kyle and Jillian have been just amazing coming in. The level of detail schools are being asked to really code kids and follow up with kids, we're on a learning curve. Like, thought I knew it all about how to code kids and those things, but really it's, you know, we're still learning, and relatively new SAI and DSS, and so there isn't that plethora of knowledge. But they have been incredibly helpful in helping us strategize, to be that thinking partner that you've heard about a couple of times, to helping us figure out how to use technology and resource, research where kids are, the follow-up, the partnership, and learning from other schools about how Herndon connected with Fairfax County Adult High School and brought the registration to the kids, instead of the kids having to go to the Plum Center, and being able to piggyback on that, being able to get some of our older students in a placement that better meets their educational needs. You know, I attribute all of that to that partnership with OSS, and just having those people who know some of those resources that you don't use every day at your fingertips has been incredibly worthwhile. And in the, in the big picture, it has allowed us to really focus more on that tier-one instruction to the benefit of all of our kids, and making sure that we're providing every student open doors to be able to take those honors classes, those dual enrollment classes, those IB classes, and making sure we're providing the supports and scaffolds they need. And I think OSS support has really pushed us to be able to do that work and change our conversation.
With that, I was going to go pretty quick, because I know we're short on time, but I do want to pause on this one for a minute, because it, you know, it is with heartfelt, you know, gratitude that I do thank the school board. This initiative does not, would not have ever taken place and would not have moved had it not been for your support, and I'm grateful for it. I think it's made a difference in the lives of kids. You can see the difference from a data perspective, but there's also a lot of other intangibles that can't necessarily be measured, and you all had the foresight to support this, and I'm greatly appreciative. I also want to thank Dr. Braybrand. You know, this has been alive for three superintendents, and any one of them could have gone in a different direction. They all have pet projects and do stuff, I think that's part of, part of that. But he had the vision to help take this to the next level. When I first started this five years ago, I never dreamed we'd be where we are. I just, I just didn't, I thought we'd be pretty good, but with the resources we have, the support, we, and we're not perfect, we got a, you know, we shouldn't have any, any bars up there. But we are a model for the, for the country. I know that, because I've done the research. And we're only going to get better because of the talent that we have and because of the support that we have. You know, one thing I, you know, my boss is up here, so I got to say something about him. But I got to tell you, the ICT meetings, the inter collaborative meetings, with those teachers back there that are rock stars, they were rock stars before they came, but what's made them even better is every month, they meet interdepartmentally with teachers from DSS, teachers from IS, our Title I teachers. It is this large think tank about what's happening in your area of expertise, and how are we sharing that to make sure as we go out and deploy in a school, we are a complement to what the overall system would like us to achieve. And it has been one of the best innovation, twenty, my 28th year, and we still have our silos, we're not perfect, but we're breaking them down. But I will tell you, I have never seen departments interact in such a positive way as I have. And to me, that's one of the greatest things, because hopefully, you know, that lasts for a long time, because that's, we've gotten in the way of ourselves for many years because of that. And I think there's been a strong commitment from the entire leadership team to break those barriers down, and it's been extremely positive. And again, you know, I didn't pay these guys to come up here. I've known some of them for a long time, and, you know, you guys have known the different principals that we've had present, and they're all independent, and they'll all tell it like it is. And I think consistently for five years, we've had people that have support, supported this, and I think it shows the power of an overall, you know, project or initiative that has supports from all the, all the different groups, and that's why it's been successful. You know, just quick division highlights, I mentioned our ICT meetings, we have great data tool collaboration. I drove Mary Beth crazy 15 years ago with some of my crazy ideas, and she put up with me. But the partnership between OSS and IT is incredible, and she has really helped lead little one-offs or things that we think are good into some global enterprise things that are helping thousands of kids. And I appreciate her support with that, and certainly with OST, best, veterans. You know, it's, it's been very different than in the past, and her expertise has been greatly appreciated. We work, you know, as I mentioned, very closely with IS and DSS, and those relationships continue to thrive and flourish. I want to get into the regional teams real quick. This is, I think, the most important part of today for me, because the board took a chance and let us expand to regional teams, and that's where you're hearing about, that you heard about the support from the principals, so not only a regional team, but a secondary team. And, you know, I don't want to read through all these, but it's, again, highly trained experts, it's really critical people. What I want to do is turn it over to our Region Five team and allow them to talk about how they use the team and how it's impacting their specific region. We've heard over the past five years from Regions Two and Three, we always have had folks from them, because we've had so many schools that have gotten direct support. Now, as we've expanded this a little bit, schools that typically would not have received the support, we're raising the bar for those kids, and that's really, really important, yet still being able to keep a tight focus on our schools with the most needs. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Becky and let her take it from there.
Thank you, Mark. Good, we're, I guess we're still afternoon. Good afternoon, everyone. I just want to start by thanking Mark and providing us with this opportunity to speak really on behalf of our colleagues, all of the regions, about how expanding Project Momentum and the department, OSS, has made a positive impact on the growth of not only our staff, but most importantly, our students. We appreciate your vision, Mark, and the support that you've given us. It's truly been a game changer, and I'm sure by the end of our remarks today, you all will see that. I also want to piggyback on Mark's gratitude for this board and Dr. Braybrand, Dr. Ivy, and Dr. Duran, in really supporting that vision and making this a reality for us. Creating our region teams, expanding the Office of School Support, and the addition of the Executive Principal for School Improvement for every single region. It was a budget priority that you had to make, and it's our pleasure to share what a difference it's made for our kids. So this model really has provided the regions with high-leverage resources that we deploy in a very targeted and systematic manner, and I think you heard that very clearly from our principals today. And it allows us to improve the quality of instruction in our classrooms and develop our teams to be high-performing, high-impact teams, and to create that multi-tiered system of support that we know is essential to support our students academically, behaviorally, and socially emotionally. I know that the Region Five team had a quick hello, and so I'm just going to, I hope you can indulge me in introducing them, because I want you to put a face with a name, and they truly are instrumental to the work that's happening every single day in our schools. So Christine McWilliams. Christine is our Ed Specialist for our region. She's really like our team leader, our team cheerleader, our facilitator. She makes miracles happen for all of us. Jen Corcoran, our Reading Resource Teacher. Heather Matthews, our Science Resource Teacher. Jen Gray, our ESAL Resource. Melissa Hicks, our Special Education Resource. Anthony Romakis, our Data Specialist. Amy Shoker, our MTSS Resource Teacher. And with us in spirit today are Stephanie Sigmund, our Math Resource, and Nisi Harvey, our Equity and Cultural Responseiveness Specialist. So, thank you, team, appreciate you being here today. So what I want to share with you, I have a unique perspective, having been in the region now, this is my sixth year, so before this and after this. And back when it was just me and Dr. Ivy for four years, we were the school improvement shop. And, you know, I certainly, as an executive principal, spent a great, and we both did, spent a great amount of time in our schools, as much as we could, you know, visiting them, observing instruction, meeting with school improvement team, planning teams, you know, meeting with instructional councils and collaborative teams, and, you know, supporting and coaching our principals. And of course, I'd like to thank that my leadership did have an impact on those visits. But when you think about that, and you're trying to take that model to scale, doing that with 32 schools, and we're the smallest region, it's just not sustainable. And it's also problematic, because it's, it's on the premise that the RAS and the EPs have the most expertise when it comes to content and pedagogy. And that certainly, I think, isn't the case when you could put it next to these professionals that are on our region teams. And then you take that and you try and balance it with the many other responsibilities and function of a region office. And again, it's just not sustainable, especially with the increased expectations, not just of these academic indicators, but these non-academic indicators that are impacting our schools. So with our current model, certainly with the Executive Principal for School Improvement, so for us in Region Five, that's Eric McCann. And, you know, with Dave and I, as the rest of the team, while we aren't technically part of OSS, all three of us are working in tandem with our region team. We're meeting with them regularly, Christine's keeping us on track, and we're always in touch with the state of, of the work in our schools. But it allows us with this team, we can be a lot more strategic in how we deploy the resources that we do have, and really, it's boots-on-the-ground support, which is more consistent, it's more targeted in the areas that are needed. So based on our tiering and our prioritizing, which Mark talked about. So at this time, I want to turn it over to Eric. So from his lens, as the EP, as I, he's going to talk a little bit about kind of the technical, how does this work? The reality of how it's impacted schools, and then a few nuggets on data that has supported its success.
Thank you, Becky. So good morning, or good afternoon, everybody. So I, day one, I think, when I started this job, when Dr. Ivy came and told me that she was no longer going to be my boss, she was going to be my boss's boss. And Becky then became, thankfully, our awesome Assistant Superintendent. We needed a new Executive Principal for School Improvement, and I feel very blessed that Mark supported me in that, Dr. Ivy supported me in that, and obviously Becky did, because it's been a great experience for me, a great learning experience. I've been so fortunate to be a part of this, as it's come into a region that has not seen this kind of support before. And, you know, being a principal, and in fact, I think I came and spoke to you a couple of years ago about the fact that in schools like, you know, Frost and Old Creek, schools that are not targeted, that we have gaps, we have needs, there are supports that are needed for our students. And so, again, I want to echo the big thank you to all of you to, for, for supporting this, because what it has allowed us to do is to be incredibly systematic with how we support our schools. And I want to kind of give you a glimpse of what that looks like for us and how we operate. We meet at the beginning of the year, and one of the first things we had to do for our region was introduce them to the concept of a region support team. What is it? What does it look like? Why are they here? Who are, you know, what? Because they weren't used to that. And as you can, might imagine, some schools might feel, well, wait a minute, why are you coming into, are you coming in to, you know, fix me? Is something wrong? What is this all about? So we spent a lot of time, and Becky, and Dave had not yet joined the team at that point, but Becky spent, and I put together with Christine, a kickoff with the team. And we spent a lot of time building relationships with us. And then we went on a tour, I like to think of it as a tour, and we went to all of our schools, and we introduced the concept of the support team and all the different members. We have great, our OSS team put together a great snapshot with all their pictures and bios, and we told them all the wonderful supports that were available for schools with this team. And we spent some time looking through data and what that might look like and where they might need supports. So that was year one. And then, and then through that year, the principals began inviting the folk, our awesome team members in, based on their needs. This year, they know the team now. We were fortunate to keep our team whole. So we did the same thing this year, but we spent time talking about their school improvement plans, what their goals were, how that matched with what team members could provide, and how they envisioned using our support team this year. So we have, in addition to that, we have region meetings every month with Becky, Dave, me, Christine, and our awesome team back there. And we talk about a variety of things, how, where our schools are, what visits have looked like, where might further needs be. And we spend time talking about what's worked and where, where we might replicate what has worked. We learn together. I want to, I want to make that a big point, too. We, we get a book, and we learn as a group. Each and every meeting is based on some learning as well, so we become better practitioners. And then all workflow is, generally flows through Christine and myself, along with Becky and Dave. So if there's a significant request from a school, the principal will reach out, and they'll ask, hey, can I have this person for lab sites, which could take an extensive amount of time. And Mark showed you all the hours they're logging in our schools, but that, we have to, because they're all such wonderful people who want to help, they'd say yes to everything, we have to help make sure that they're managing their time appropriately, too, and not extending themselves too much. So we spend some time looking at that. I also want to put a quick word in to thank you for your financial support of OSS, because we, we can a petition for grants at times, and those were incredibly fortunate, given our budgets, which are not, not very robust at the region level, and Mark might be able to help support a visit for lab sites, for substitutes, because our elementary schools don't have the budget to supply subs that might be necessary for something like that. Providing reading material, differentiated reading material for our students at Stone Middle School, a whole variety of things. And when those come in, there's a protocol. They submit a request to Mark, it flows through us, he asks if we're okay with that, if that's warranted based on the data. And then at the conclusion of it, they write basically a summary of what, how that went, and what the results were, what the net benefit was of that request. And Mark keeps a pretty extensive book and shares those results with us as well. So throughout the year, I also hold one-on-one meetings with all the, all our staff members throughout the school year, checking in on them. We try to meet in schools oftentimes. And I, and I also want to emphasize, they hit every single one of our schools. So while in Region Five, we have some schools that maybe are more on our, our list, are based on data, have higher needs than others, every school's got needs, and every school has welcomed them in. I also want to highlight a few positive outcomes division-wide. Having five of us EP for School Improvement has created its, we've created our own little CLT, if you will. And, and it's been a benefit to all of us. We get to meet with Mark, and Stephanie, and Jennifer, and every, and monthly, and then with the whole team, we engage in the learning with them, and it has allowed us to extend our learning and cross-regions. So I'm learning from my Region Two and Three colleagues and bringing some of their learning into our region and vice versa. So it's, it's broadened, you know, the silos Mark talked about are being broken down through this process. The other thing I want to say is that it creates an atmosphere of welcoming and openness and learning. We're all learners. It doesn't matter what school you're in, it doesn't matter if you're all green, everybody's got something they can learn and get better at. And so what, what these amazing team members do, and we have an awesome team back there, they go in and they help, they help spread best practices. And, and because we have a great data specialist, I want to highlight that piece, too. Having Anthony with us, he can get down to not just the school, but maybe a team, maybe a grade-level team, a specific team that needs it, and that's where they're going, instead of, you know, doing it for the whole school, where maybe, maybe that's not the need. So it's very targeted and systematic because of the supports that we have. One other thing that I want to say is it creates equity for all of our kids. Every one of our kids is getting supports. We are closing gaps in our region. I'll give you two, two quick results. You're going to, you're going to celebrate a lot of these folks. You're going to, you're going to celebrate a lot of these folks in a coming board meeting, right? It's coming up soon and some of this stuff. But as an example, a little run, I'm going to just highlight them real quick. They brought in Heather, our science expert back there, and she did, she did very targeted PD with science. And they embraced her, they learned with her, they planned, they paced, and they went from a 78%, which, you know, was still going to be accredited, but obviously wasn't where you would want it to be, up to a 92%, okay? Greenbrier West, and Patty's not up here, but you'll be celebrating them in a coming, you know, they, that's a school you wouldn't think, oh, Greenbrier West, you know, they're, that's a very highly successful school. Well, they had a gap in special education math, okay? They were at 55% adjusted the year before. And Patty and her teachers and her administrators opened their doors, embraced the team, they came in, they worked with them all year long in special education. Melissa back there spent a lot of time, Jen, Stephanie, Heather, everybody was in, because Patty invited them in with, that's the nature of our principals, they welcome them in. They went from a 55 to a 91%. 91%. In English, which wasn't necessarily their focus, but that was still a part of the, and language arts did not jump as much, as many of you know, throughout the state, they went from a 72 to an 88% in special education, language arts. So the, the last couple of things I just want to say here is, you know, kind of the, as Mark said, Becky said, the true beneficiary, and our awesome principals here said, the beneficiary is the kids of what this program does. Kids are ultimately thousands of kids, and all of our regions are benefiting as a result. And the other thing I want to say is that it's not just about those scores that I read off or accreditation or being all green, it's best instructional practices being spread throughout our system for all. That, that, that is the net, and then scores will come as a result, but that is what the team is really doing. Thanks.
Thank you, Eric. We are, I got one more slide, this is it. So, and I'll talk really quick. This is just our secondary school support model. Kim highlighted a lot of that for you in, in her remarks. But these are just the different areas that we can support, needs for schools, pretty much all those different areas. We have the same excellent staff that we do at the elementary level. We do have one secondary team for all schools, so we tier them, we're getting out. You know, as Kim mentioned, it, it's kind of hard for, it's harder to get into high schools sometimes than it is middle and elementary schools. That's the nature of the beast. I've been at all three levels, it's just a little different. And I have been really impressed with the, the ability of not only our teachers to get, get out and get into schools, but the openness of the principals. And that is one of the reasons why I asked Kim to come and share, because she has been one of the leaders at the forefront of inviting people out. And then she's a leader within the organization, they see that, they talk to each other. Before you know it, now all of a sudden, you've got three schools asking, four schools asking, and it's, it's, it's growing really well. There, most of our folks are booked out. They, if a school asks for help, we can't get to half of them probably till end of November, December at the earliest. I mean, there, that's how, that's how many requests come in asking for support. So it's been extremely positive. And with that, you know, I'm never going to give up on this, because it is my expectation. We do have all our schools fully accredited, and we're going to continue that. I, I want to have all green schools before I ride off into the sunset someday. It is, I, I am bound and determined to make that happen. So with that, we are open for questions?
Okay, thank you so much. We're going to use the same rule, three minutes for each board member. That doesn't mean that you have to use up all your three minutes. And, and also, I would prefer, if you use your lot of time, all of them or any part of them, asking all the questions you want to ask first, rather than asking a question in every five seconds. So with that, I have four of the board members on my list so far, starting with Mr. Schultz, to be followed by Ms. Evans, Karen Kies-Kamara, and Chairman Corvus Sanders. So, Mr. Schultz.
Okay, I'd like to request five go-backs. Okay, can we go to slide eight, please? You said three of our schools are pending approval. If you could explain further why that is, like what the background is and their approval, because I think there's very good explanations. If you go to slide nine, you said schools with Level Two, that there, there were five, but then, it says five, but then you said 23. I don't understand that. If you go to slide 10, whether, let's see. Oh, whether you calculate, whether the state calculates it or not, I have to understand my own notes, whether the state calculates it or not, this is something I've been asking for, for a long time, not only in attendance, but also in student discipline. I think we should be calculating when the absences occur in the year. I think it is crucial. 10 absences that are every Monday is an entirely different problem than was the student gone, you know, the day before Thanksgiving, three days before winter break, and the last five days of the, you know, something like that. Bulking them in periods of the school year where it's not as much of a impact, an educational impact, and demonstrating when those attendances, attendance and absentee, absentees occur is crucial. If you can go to slide 15, on the dropout, if you could identify, and this may be a next step, identify who, who is dropping out and the correlation of who to their dropout, because I have a feeling that if we correlate it to when they've arrived within FCPS, we're not a part, part problem with the dropout. And I think we need to magnify that. I, we don't have a dropout problem. I'm going to keep saying it, because it's sort of starting to creep into our vernacular, and I'm, I'm being repulsed by that concept, because we don't have a dropout problem. There are very tiny, small, super-subgroups in which some dropouts are happening, and I think we need to identify who, who is dropping out and what that is. I think it's de minimis in terms of our impact. Have you looked at, and this may need to be another next step, it's something I've asked before, the correlation of what is happening in middle school? Because we were talking about the 50% turnover, what's happening in middle school that's co-located with a secondary school in, versus a standalone middle school in terms of absenteeism and all the rest? Project Momentum, can we target special ed the way we're targeting everything else? Because that we could get ahead, we would be proactive. And does the number of supports and the hours of supports correlate relative to the increases? And I'll save my others for a go-back.
Thank you so much.
Can answer any, anything that you would like, because there was a lot there. I talked fast.
Thank you.
So I'll, I'll get to the ones I can quickly, and so starting with slide five, which your question was in relation to, oh, actually, it must have been slide...
Eight.
Oh, thank you, slide eight, thank you. Related to the schools with appeals pending. So these three schools are Fort Belvoir Primary Justice and Mount Vernon High Schools. Fort Belvoir Primary is accredited with conditions for achievement gap in English, and Justice in Mount Vernon for dropout rate. For those three schools, based on dialogue with the cabinet, and the cabinet with the chairs, as I understand, appeals were written by the schools, run through the Office of School Support and myself, and submitted to the State Board of Education. The board introduced a new process this year whereby a division may appeal for...
Just, just to clarify, the State Board, not this board?
Thank you, yes, thank you. The State Board introduced a new area where a school division may appeal a particular indicator. So for each of these three schools, because there was a single indicator that was at the Level Three, that was causing them to be identified for accredited with condition, the determination was made based on the review of their data and justification of the work that was in place in those schools to put forward appeals. So again, we'll know later this week how the State Board has reviewed those appeals in terms of whether they are received positively or, or not. So that's the first question. For the next question, I believe it's the next slide, this was my error in using the clicker, I apologize. So when I said 23 schools, I was actually referencing the next slide, which is here. So for achievement, we have only the five schools identified. For achievement gaps is where we have 23 schools at Level, at Level Two currently. And again, that was a new measure that is out this year, and the work within Project Momentum and Office of School Support that you heard this school speak about are, is really intended to address those gaps that are new. In terms of looking at when chronic absenteeism is happening, that is indeed part of the work of the Office of Intervention and Prevention Services with schools, is to really have detailed review of the specific absences within that building, so that they can form a plan to address whatever the unique needs are, because the, the absences in, in one school are going to be very different from the absences in another school and the root causes behind those. In terms of who is dropping out, that data is available, we've been looking at that at a, a division level, and it's actually in the preliminary work for the Student Success Report coming out soon, Goal One, but we can also provide that as a next step if needed.
Let me, let me share a couple of other things there. I'm going to give the board a full copy of all of our information regarding the appeals very shortly. And I, I want to say just a couple of things about what you shared. For, for, for Belvoir Elementary, it's our, one of our highest mobility elementary schools. We're looking at everything soup to nuts. We put a new principal in, we put a new leadership supports in, and we saw great gains in math. We just need to do the same thing in English. At the same time, though, the state passed a rule to allow military families to go to any school of their choice. So really, we're going back in that school to a model that we went away from over 10 years ago with No Child Left Behind. When we identified schools, we gave them a label, and then we told parents, go anywhere else but that school. That's not, that's, that's a, that's a play from the past, not a play for the future. So that's one thing we're going to be sharing the state with. Right, it's only a one grade, which is part of their feedback, is look at structural adjustments, which we are looking at right now, and I'll have recommendations based on the state superintendent's feedback. The other thing, Ms. Schultz, you said that is right on the kisser, is exactly right. We don't have a dropout problem. We have a dropout indicator problem. The state has created an indicator that is not equitable. We should not label a child a dropout when they barely even dropped in one day, one day in high school. If you're there, you're then declared a dropout. This is disproportionately impacting our second language learners, our SCIF kids, and we are going to have a powerful message at the state that it's time to bring equity to that indicator and not send a message to schools that open their doors wide for these kids, that these kids get labeled dropouts, and that these schools get labeled as schools with education going on that's with conditions. The only condition going on on those two high schools is a condition of excellence and of equity. So we're going to have the right message to say in a few days, I'll give you all a copy, but we have a dropout indicator problem.
As co-reading manager, I know, I just want to catch Dr. Braybrand on something, and for everybody, we keep using anacronyms. So SCIF, anyone watching is going to know what that is. And everybody, stay away from, from anacronyms. Mark, you said a bunch of stuff, I'm like, oh, nobody's going to know what you're talking about.
SCIF stands for Students With Interrupted Formal Education. And I may have said English Language Learners or ELL, Second Language Students.
There was just one other question that I thought you could answer just quickly. Does the number of supports and hours of supports, is it relative to the increases or there's not any correlation?
There is a definite correlation. It's not linear, it's not a, you know, it's certainly not perfect, but we are definitely, we definitely saw increases in the schools with higher supports. That was a definite, and we can break that down and look how we would have to do that. And you also had a question around special ed, and so we are doing some of that work. We work very... Yes, we are, we are on the proactive.
So, so let me just share on special ed, because I want the board to make a connection here. When we took Project Momentum under prior superintendent's leadership and we scaled it to all regions, Dr. Duran worked with Mark and Teresa and reimagined those teams to add a special education expert in every region. Didn't have that before in Project Momentum. Last year was the first year with a targeted special education expert for every region around instruction, best practices in instruction that could go in to those schools and provide direct support. I believe you're going to continue to see improvement in the special education subgroup because of doing this. And the question is, do we need to continue to put additional supports in to provide that for those teachers? A lot of our special ed teachers have been some of the least prepared through the way the state does its accreditation or teacher preparation to go in, and we've got to be putting in more professional development for those teachers, not less. This is the beginning. Last year was the first full year of having special education-directed resources from OSS.
Okay, thank you. I have Ms. Evans, to be followed by Karen Kies-Kamara.
Thank you. And first of all, kudos to all of you. I mean, Project Momentum has been such a tremendous success. So congratulations on all this work. It just, you know, whether you see it through the numbers or whether you see it by going to the schools, you see the impact that this has had on, on students and on schools. So thank you for all that work. I'm glad to follow Dr. Braybrand. One of the points I wanted to make is that we, as a board, need to take some of our advocacy into the, what we're going to be discussing next, and that's our legislative package. Because I, I couldn't agree more with Dr. Braybrand about how we are disadvantaging certain schools, the current, the, the current requirements disadvantage those schools that are, are the recipients of the most challenged students and the ones who come to us and with interrupted formal education, which might mean no education in some cases, no or very, none or very little, and come to us at 16 and 17. And that sets up a, a dynamic that's, that's very difficult for, for us to, to handle. So I think we need a more realistic understanding at the state level of what that requires. I appreciate all the work that's gone on to, to the appeals. You know, I will be there on Thursday with, with Dr. Braybrand, just to support Dr. Braybrand and the team there. I'll, I'll look forward to seeing your comments. I think we have an excellent case. I was very disappointed that Dr. Lane was recommending a denial of the appeals, but at the same time, I hope we can turn that around, because we have an excellent case to make. Couple of things I would say, I'm delighted that you want to see everyone fully accredited without any conditions. I would be interested to know how we are going to get the, the schools that have currently dropout rates of 11% below, you know, to eight. That already we are doing a tremendous amount of work on that, so if, if you had some thoughts on that. And then lastly, my question is, I see on slide 43, the two schools that are, the two high schools accredited with conditions are targeted as opposed to intensive. I'd be interested to know what the thinking was on putting them as targeted rather than intensive. And actually, I do have one other question. Very impressive team that you outlined for Region Five, and I see that on slide 30, 35, we talk about how each region has a certain number of, of specialists, which, which is wonderful, but if you look at the schools on page, that are targeted and intensive, 17 of the 24 are in Region Two and Three. So I would like to know, do we have more in those, more people and more services in Region Two and Three? And if not, why not?
Okay, I will try to go in order here. For, in terms of dropout, we, I think the system is doing some incredible things. For the first time, we did our first problem of practice as a leadership team, where we really studied the problem. We brought in all the principals that were affected, they are a major part of this. And then actually tomorrow is our third meeting on this, where we're coming up with recommendations for solutions. And some of them, it's great that you're having a legislative meeting, they are things to... are things to, to support legislatively. Many of them are our own practices. And what can we do as a system that could be better? I'm just going to throw one out that's a real easy one that, for people that, to consider. So in some of these schools, transportation is an issue. Transportation to the Plum Center. Maybe one bus comes once. Maybe a bus doesn't come at all. Getting a bus that drops off and picks up at each one of these schools, that may or may not end up being a final recommendation. But those are the things that we got to make sure as a system we're looking at to then put in place. I believe Dr. Braybrand will have an excellent set of recommendations to bring this board in, in very short time. Again, we're doing a, a big part of this tomorrow to culminate on three full sessions of, of this work. And there's been a lot of work done in the past around it as well. So I think that will, will be very helpful. Why are they targeted instead of intensive? Our original practice was that we were only going to put you on intensive if it was an academic indicator. Because at that time, in, in my office, because remember, we do this a year before, we really didn't, we didn't have anybody that could have taken care of the academic indicators and supported. So now that we do have a secondary team and people with expertise in this area, it is under consideration for us. As I kind of mentioned before, if you have, I said if you had any indicator in red, you would be intensive. I kind of said that at the beginning. That's what we'd be looking to put in place so if that happens for anybody next year. Please know, those schools that do have a red indicator are getting a very, and they are getting intensive support. We're out there. We meet with them monthly. So they're really getting the same kind of support. It just looks a little different because it's really around the dropout indicator. And they, they're also all part of a work group that meets separately than the Project Momentum meetings to discuss system-wide practices. They're learning from the people that are in our office. So they're definitely getting a lot of support. And then once we get this list of, a list generated from tomorrow's work, they will then continue to work with those schools on, here's the system-wide things that we want to put in place. But we can certainly look at making a school considering it intensive if they have only one, an indicator that's red regardless if it's academic or non-academic. So that's, we'll definitely take that under advisement. I think that's the way we're leaning. And the last one was Regions Two and Three. You noted that the regions do look the same in terms of support, but actually Regions Two and Three have an extra math and ELA elementary person in those regions. So their, their teams are actually a little bit bigger. There's also some overlap within our own OSS structure where we will take some of our folks that could be in a different region, and they will have a primary responsibility for one of the intensive schools that's in another region to help alleviate that region further. So we've definitely put some things in place. But yes, the needs are greater. They are.
And what is ELA?
I'm sorry, English Language Arts.
Oh, I see.
I apologize.
So Sandy, just straight shooter. When we put it in a year ago, we didn't have differentiation for Two and Three, for the team. We put in a team, but we didn't differentiate it. The two RAS, along with really Francisco, Mark, Francis came and said, "We need to fix it." And I went to Marty and Lee.
Good. Love to hear that.
We made some work, and we added two additional teachers for each region focused on the core of English. We did it for the, we did it for this year. So they weren't in, so I'm just being straight with you that last year, we didn't have them in place. This year, the region said, "Scott, there's, the need is greater." So we, we put an extra math support teacher and an extra language arts support teacher in both those regions.
I'm delighted to hear it.
It's Karen Skamar to be followed by Chairman Corbin Sanders.
I'm always happy to hear from our Project Momentum folks. It takes me to my happy place. I did want to follow up on comments by both my colleagues regarding the dropout rate. And I'm, I'm going to focus, they made some comments I wanted to make, but I'm going to focus on identification. I don't think that, at least to my knowledge, that the state with their new requirement is requiring any differentiation. But I think whether they're asking for it or not, we should provide it. And so that, maybe that's the next step, or I'd like to hear your thoughts on that. Because I can tell you, as one who's been out in the community extensively in the past couple of months, these are the kinds of things that lead to misinformation and, you know, some, some debate that is not necessarily factual. Another thing that I've been hearing is about students going to, and this may or may not be something you're aware of or is in your bailiwick, but mentioning that students going to Nova are requiring, a large percentage are requiring remediation. I'm thinking that these may be some of the same students we're talking about that late arrivals. I don't know if that's something to know about, but if you do, please speak to it. I did notice when I looked at the report I received from Mr. Greenfelder, that we seem to be having some difficulty in science. I know we had some changes there. So I'd like to hear what our plans are to address that. And I think you already spoke to my next question, which was, I was wondering how these teams are interfacing with our regional superintendents and how you guys become a, a team in that regard. I'll stop there. I have a little bit of time.
So we will be providing to Dr. Braybrand by school, a complete breakdown of every type of dropout that was there. Betris has been working hard on that, and that's close to being done. As soon as she's finished, that's completed, she'll make sure that Dr. Braybrand and the leadership team, Dr. Ivy, Dr. Duran get that. So that, that data will absolutely happen. The Nova thing, it's something I would, I would, I understand what you're asking. I just don't have any knowledge of that. It's not, that isn't something that's really in my bailiwick. But, you know, obviously, improving instruction for all kids and trying to help them have those essential skills to carry on in post-secondary education is critical. I just don't have any direct knowledge of, of what that is. Science, you know, science is a, is a, is a tough one because we go up and we go down and we go up. Overall, we've trended up. Those schools that backslided a little bit and made it on their three-year average, basically, they typically hover in 70, 75 area, and they just had a slight dip. But it did bring them in, into, you know, the yellow area. And what I would say is, it's really ensuring that all kids are getting science, not just in fourth and fifth grade, but all the way starting in kindergarten and being exposed to it. So we're not into this last minute trying to turn it around. And with the region teams, and through the region assistant superintendents and the EPs, we are now being more specific in targeting them. Some of these schools, they have so many things to keep an eye on, right? So they put all their emphasis on math and, and English Language Arts. And they pull that up, and they take their eye off just for a second of science, and it backslides a little bit. There's only so many hours in the day. They're trying to cram it all in. So our job is to make sure that we work with those schools to really set the priority that there is a set time for science, that they're using the incredible instructional materials that Instructional Services developed, some of the best science stuff anywhere. But they've got to use it on a regular basis. They have to be coached up. And so for us, it's a little bit of putting your finger in the dike. You know, we'll run to these schools that have trouble this year and spend a lot of time. You heard the results of, of what, what happened in one school with science with some focus. But that's one person that's trying to serve, you know, 25 to 27 elementary schools. And in our larger regions, it's 30 plus. You know, you can only get to so many places. But we do have good practices in place. We're trying to share those. We're doing some collaborative professional development, bringing in multiple schools. But your, your point is duly noted, and we will continue to try to make a better effort to make that very solid. And the last thing was the interfacing. I think you heard a little bit about that from Region Five. They did a tremendous job. But really, the region teams, you know, it's funny, sometimes at our, our meetings, I say, you know, remember, you guys work for OSS. You work, because it's a good problem. They are, they're so connected to the region teams and those schools. They take such pride in it. And that's what we want. And so they really are their own family, and they're very, very connected, used very strategically. They know these guys, you know, on a regular basis. They're meeting. So that's, that's really powerful. My job is to make sure that they're all connected. So we bring up the collective knowledge of the system and that we're not having regions that are doing things that aren't aligned. Dr. Ivy has been adamant about making sure that our regions get more aligned. She has led us in that for the past two years, and they're more, I was, I was an executive principal. We weren't aligned. They are way more aligned now. So that, and they're using their teams in the same manner.
So just the last question, I'm going to, you may or may not be able to address this, but someone mentioned achieving an appropriate level of rigor. And I know that there is the perception that there may be more rigor in some regions as opposed to others. And so could we talk a little bit about what that means and how we kind of make sure we're delivering that level of rigor with fidelity across the county?
So I'll talk briefly about that. That's something I'd probably, that's on our list and on our part of our strategic plan and something that Dr. Braybrand may want to add some comments to. The folks that we have in our office are highly skilled. They're some of the best professionals in the division. That's why they were selected to be part of OSS. They know rigor in their content areas as good or better than anybody. What their job is, is to take the framework created from Instructional Services and help to make sure we're training folks up to include that high-level rigor in classrooms. It is not something that is done quickly. It's an expectation, as Darwin mentioned in his comments. But it is something that we do through professional development. We do through expectations. It is something that the region leadership is something that we're discussing at that level, and I know is getting discussed back with principals and through, through region meetings. Because rigor is, having access to high levels of rigor is absolutely a gateway for kids. And we need to make sure that we're doing that. I know we're going to have a, a group look at that in the areas of math. So we really want to make sure that we're giving kids that expertise. Our job is to make sure that we're coaching up teachers and teacher teams to be able to use the resources that we've developed in Fairfax and have that expectation that kids can do this and, and access that high level of rigor. So that, that's kind of where, where we are as a OSS team in trying to help that.
Thank you. I'll yield my 41 seconds.
Thank you so much. Nobody has to take up that additional 41 seconds. Chairman Corbin Sanders?
I may take the 41 seconds. No. Couple of things. I'm very glad Elizabeth mentioned the special ed supports. And I am, I was pleased to see the supports at the elementary school level. I do think that we need to have a more intentful approach to providing those supports at the middle and high school level, especially because in many ways, you all are the bar to, that all of our schools need to get over. But we want to make sure that our special ed students, as well as our other underrepresented populations, are able to go well beyond that bar. And so I think that you all play a very important role in providing those supports. The second thing is, I'd like to know, and you don't need to answer it today, is how the special ed supports are working with our behavioral intervention teachers to, to address some of the concerns that we've seen in our classrooms so that we can make sure that our kids stay in school and are able to excel. Then last, or actually, a couple of more. Region Three is your largest region. Last year, it had the exact same amount of resources as Region Five, which is your smaller, smallest region. I appreciate that this year, we've added additional resources. But I will once again, as I have for the past two years, recommend that we have to relook at our regions so that they are more balanced in size. Because Region Three, you either have to increase proportionately the amount of resources available to the region, or we have to restructure those regions. It's just, it's too much to handle. Because how many, there's what, 20, there are 30 schools in Region Three?
In Region Three, I believe there's 40, it's either 45 or 43.
45, okay. Out of the 190. That's a pretty significant number. Yeah. So the two regions have half of the schools, and I don't think they have half the resources. As far as the, and so I will plea again that we look, relook at how we structure these regions. I also am very pleased to hear about the collaboration that's going on. I will encourage that we need to do more with the science. And I would like to know from you all if there's a correlation between the change in our sci, our approach to science and what happened with our scores, and whether or not we need to go back and do some tweaking of that. And then last, I will thank you, everybody, because I think it's wonderful that we are doing a celebration of the achievement gaps. Because these, the schools that have done incredible effort, Herculean effort, along with your Project Momentum team, are the schools that may not be recognized as often. And they should be cheered because the innovation is amazing. Thank you.
I'll make sure, I'll do, for the supports with working with the, the bits, I want to make sure I collaborate with Ms. Johnson on that, just so that I have a good logical explanation. Because that's something that I, I know the team does that. I just don't know at what level. And I want to make sure that I'm answering that correctly. I'll make sure that we, we get that to you. I certainly agree, we are looking at ways to provide more special ed support at, at the secondary level in both middle school and high school. That's something that we're trying to figure out. And then the one thing I want to say about science is, I know we had a couple schools that backslid a little bit, but overall, we did very well in science. You'll see that as part of the strategic, the Goal One plan when that's reported. So you'll actually, you'll see that. So we really didn't do overall as a division poorly in science. Note, none of our schools should be below the threshold, ever. And that's just not acceptable. And we will continue to do everything we can to ensure that that doesn't happen.
Dr. Braybrand, you want to address the regions and the fact that two regions have half of the schools?
I'll have a plan to address it in this year's budget.
I have Mrs. Strauss to be followed by Mr. McElbin.
Thank you all very much. Project Momentum is just an incredible success for Fairfax County. And we appreciate everybody's hard work. And it, it really is fabulous to see an aggressive support system that is really getting results. We get the data. We appreciate, I think all of us get to have our smaller meetings so that we really can go in detail with not only the schools in our own district, but everybody else's. So we really get a good sense of what's going on. I am pleased with my colleagues who've been talking about the dropout issue. And a lot of us, as we see state, some of our state legislators, we're all, I think we talked with, with Michael Malloy, clearly, something needs to be done at the state level because this is not, not a fair assessment of what's really going on. Just, you know, I don't have any questions. I have more kudos on, on just the results of this. I, I'm very proud of McLean High School. They raised their students with disabilities by 20 points. 20 points. This was wonderful. What is interesting in this approach, I think 30, almost 40 years ago, when we had area offices, they were staffed much more robustly as standalone school divisions. And as money would become tight, and we were always criticized, you know, blow to bureaucracy. And then we went, we kept getting skinnier and skinnier and skinnier in our ability to, to help schools. And then when we looked at international research, we began to see that walkthroughs and observations and collaborative learning, you know, this, this whole piece of every, all the professionals getting together and observing how they're doing, that you really needed that kind of support. But it took so long. Even when we began putting instructional coaches in schools, the question was, oh, it's more bureaucracy. And the way Project Momentum has, has truly been put together and staffed and aggressively staffed, and then with the data to support it. We really see results, and it's fabulous. We are breaking down silos. And I think we have come up with, with a real winning approach. And I know part of the frustration with science is that, particularly the at the elementary level, sometimes you're focusing on your reading and your math, because that's the big push, and you're not actually using the wonderful curriculum, because it is a wonderful science curriculum. So we just need to keep our eyes on all of those balls. But thank you all very, very much.
Thank you. I will go to Ms. Devina Corvax to be followed by Ms. Palchak.
All right. I'm pleased to be following Ms. Strauss, because my questions too have all been answered. And I don't think, Janie, you could have said it any better. I do remember the days, this was long before I was on the board, about talking about, you know, the silo bureaucracies of, of, of the regions and where we are. And we have broken those down. We may need additional supports. Mr. Greenfelder, you and your entire team and everyone up here who's supporting this initiative, thank you so much. I can't tell you, you know, while a lot of these areas, the targeted schools are in my region, I know how hard you're working. And I feel very confident about the, the, the measures you're taking, as well as I know intimately the struggles and, and, and the, the things that are, are making this a difficult situation. So I think we have to be open and honest about that, as we have been. I think we have to dedicate additional resources. I, Ms. Evans talked about, you know, the types of, of, you know, our newcomer population, I've been talking about that for a long time. I know this is targeting that. I know we're not exactly where we want to be. Dr. Duran, you were part of adding, you know, additional supports to that. And we need to continue to do that as we talk about our equity work. I think that's very, very important. So just, just thank you all for what you're doing. I am Dr. Braybrand, and the team that came up with the idea of the celebration of closing the gaps, that's extremely important to recognize that, because that's a recognition of this hard work. It's not, and it wouldn't be readily available to the public if it wasn't something, if we didn't have all this data and details about how, how we're really working hard to do that. So thank you all. Thank you all for being here. And thank you for all that you're doing.
I just, two quick things to that. I just want to share that the idea of the celebration really came from chair leadership. We meet in chairs, and Ms. Corbett Sanders, and you talked about, when we were getting ready to do the governor's awards, about celebrating our own equity story. So this is about when we partnered together, coming up with a great idea, that really, we're already hearing in our all-county principals meeting last week, we recognized among their peers, they're gonna get recognition in front of this board, but they got to be recognized in front of their peers just last week. I just want to want to leave you with a note, just for a taste of where it's gonna come, because we're finishing, and we have a meeting tomorrow before our appeal on Thursday. In the old system for academic indicators, there was something called the 11 semester rule. You had five and a half years before your scores, the kids' scores, were counted in the test scores. Five and a half years. Dropout indicator is one day.
That's ridiculous.
One day. Five and a half years, one day. I want to be held accountable. I want this community to hold us accountable. But I want an indicator that is not putting a false label on our kids or on our schools. And I am confident that what we're gonna share this week, with your support too, is going to, if, if we don't get the change, we're going to elevate this issue and have fair accountability for our communities, for the staff that serve these kids, and for the kids themselves.
I just want to say amen.
Just wanted to respond to him, amen. But I also wanted to say, you might want to call it the traveling through Fairfax penalty.
Okay, I have Ms. Palchak next.
Okay, thank you. I too want to thank you and your entire team and the regions. I know when, when teams are merged, when there's big change, it can bring a little bit of consternation. And, and it sounds like it's been a very successful partnership. So I just want to thank you, Mr. Greenfelder and your team, for working with Dr. Duran as well, and vice versa. Because I know that for the first time, we're not there yet, but we really are getting toward closing some of these achievement gaps, having that focus on equity. And we know that's what's really critical for our kids. Agree with a lot of what my colleagues said. I have a couple very quick questions, and I apologize if they were answered. The first one, and I'll go through all of them, as we talk about dropout, graduation attendance, et cetera, while I understand that we do want to look at the indicators, I guess, in their essence, right, their intention is good, right? Their intention is to try to ensure that school systems, schools are really supporting kids and trying to understand why kids might be dropping out, why they might be having attendance issues, which we know, right, are related to their achievement and progress. So, A, if you have things you're looking at, whether they're recommendations for school-based or support, or additional support for what you're doing, I'd like to hear that. Because I want to make sure we're also not overlooking that part of it. Second question, and I don't know if I misread the graph about supports per region, and I see Dr. Zalaga is here. Just wondering, I don't know if you mentioned it, why region two has the lowest number and what that means. I know they're doing incredible work, but just wondering what those numbers mean. Three, transportation. So happy to see your principal from South Lakes here. I was just reading for the county report, I think they're getting tomorrow a report on the stu, the school bus, the student bus program, both the Womata bus and the Fairfax County Connector bus. I believe you have the highest number of students with the card. So as we talked about transportation, wanted to get your perspective of what impact you've seen from that program, and any recommendations for moving forward. And then finally, was wondering, I know we, we often ask if some of the great work we're doing is being presented either by Dr. Braybrand or his team, you know, in professional settings to share and get feedback on, you know, what we're so proud of in Fairfax. So I think this is my final question, and really just want to thank all of you. And we are in very good hands here in Fairfax. So thank you.
I will do my best to do this really quick. The dropout and GCI, we are looking at those indicators. As I mentioned, we will be having a final work group tomorrow. And so we will compile all that information, all the suggestions. They are both at the school level and at the division level. We will present those. Dr. Braybrand is a part of that. But we will make sure that Dr. Braybrand, Dr. Ivey, Dr. Duran have those to then present to the board. I think they're gonna be excellent suggestions. And I do think they're gonna help. I think the biggest thing--
Sorry, so we could, we'll be able to see that some of us are leaving the board before we move on with the budget?
Yes, you'll definitely see that.
Perfect, thank you.
And, and the biggest, and the biggest change is what Dr. Braybrand mentioned, and several school board members had comments on, is five and a half years for academic indicators and one day for non-academic indicators. And it makes no sense. You can come in a month before school is out and register, and you're a dropout. I mean, it's, it makes no sense. So those, if we can eliminate a few of those key things, we won't, we won't, we will eliminate the dropout problem for our targeted students that are having that issue. And we won't have schools, any schools that are accredited with conditions. That we know.
And Ms. Palchak, make sure we heard what you just said. This is not about making sure that school districts continue to pour supports to those kids, and then find the kids that are here. But just for a brief moment, how do we better bring them into the system and keep them in and get them something so they'll be able to go and be a productive member of the community? So--
Yeah, and I guess to say, right, what's, when things are working, generally they're working well the same way. When things are broken, they're broken in different ways, right?
Correct.
So as long as we're studying that, I know I sat through several Falls Church High School meetings where we looked at partnering with a community to help students, not just those registering and leaving, dropping out, but students who are really struggling, right, with attendance and with staying in school for a variety of reasons. So I just want to make sure we're doing both of those. Yeah.
And your last question--
Oh, and I think our principal--
Go ahead, yes.
So I think, two things you asked about support. So one of the things that many of the high schools have to do is identify somebody to be an on-time graduation counselor, which is relatively new, brand new for me to have to address that. And so when that opportunity come, does come, for the board to consider different resources, and us as a county, that's something that has become incredibly useful for us as a school. We have an ESOL counselor, we're using her split time, so being creative with the staffing--
Certainly you're funding that, correct?
We got allocated an ESOL counselor because of our numbers. We've shifted her responsibilities to support both on-time graduation and ESOL programming and those students. The other thing, you asked about the bus passes. For me, that's a level the playing field, piece of access. We have students who can get to their jobs, who, some of our students who are going to the Herndon adult site, the bus pass allows them that transportation to be able to get where. Some of our students whose parents are working downtown, that maybe socioeconomically are fine, they have transportation home if they want to stay after. It's not just late, bus day, Wednesday. So it really benefits kids from all different socioeconomic backgrounds for a number of reasons. And for some of our kids, for attendance, right, I'd rather them get there a little bit late than not get there at all. And so that is another avenue that allows our kids to get around the rest in Herndon area. So it's, I think, been a really positive thing. We've worked some kinks out as the systems have changed. But overall, it's been a very positive.
I wanted to get to your other question about region two, the data. So one of the things that's not in those hours is when they do team or multiple schools, so we, which is something we can look into doing. So region two has actually led the way in partnering schools and doing workshops with multiple schools at a time. So they, they spend inordinate amount of time at the beginning of the year on that structure, which is paid dividends. You're getting more, more teachers and more schools through. That's just not reflected in here. So I, I should probably tease that out a little bit better, because it shouldn't look like that. Region two uses their resources as good as anybody, and their data shows it. So absolutely.
Right, no, absolutely. Thank you. And then Dr. Duran, I know you had something else you wanted to add.
No, your last question was about sharing the work. So there are four conferences that we've either been asked to come to or that we have applied to, and national conferences, and also state conference, VSBA, the Virginia School Board Association, the National School Board Association, and two national conferences up for school superintendents.
Okay, I have Mr. McElbin.
Before I go to my questions and comments, I did want to respond to something that Ms. Kies-Gamara had brought up. And, and when I'm done with my remarks, I'd like other people to speak to it. But this issue about Fairfax County graduates needing remediation when they go on to attend Northern Virginia Community College, this came up my first year on the board, almost eight years ago. And one of the things we need our system to do a better job is, A, if Northern Virginia Community College has a problem and a concern, we want to partner with them. And they need to have more robust dialogue with us on this. But what I remember, the statistic was about 25% of our students graduate from Fairfax County schools and go on to Northern Virginia Community College. If that's a 50% number, well then 50% of that, of the 26 who are going there, that's 13%. So the reflection is 13% of Fairfax County students are being identified as graduating and needing remediation. So it's not a 50% number. And so percentages on the end number is really important. And so, and the percent on a percent is also important. So I wanted to make sure that was stated. And I'm gonna stop, well--
Just 10 seconds. I've been here three years. I have spoken to the Nova president multiple times. I have never heard that fact presented to me. So I, I continue to be interested in community narratives, or narratives that are out in the community that are not necessarily grounded in fact. I'll be glad to go back and research that, to learn more about it. But I, I by no means am ready to say that that represents the reality of our students at Nova Community College.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. I think that's really important, because speaking factually and accurately is important, not only for the division, but for all of those amazing young men and women who are going on to the community college and, and being framed that way in a, in a public manner. And I, I don't think that it's coming directly from necessarily Northern Virginia Community College leadership, but we own it together to have the record set straight. So I just want to, unfortunately, it took up two of my three minutes, Ms. Kies-Gamara, so I may take an extra minute now. I got 41 from you, good. I, I want to just echo what everyone has said, that Mark, the work that you and your Office of Special Supports, what you're doing is amazing. The entire team, region five, you know, the time that we spent together looking over the schools that I have in your region, just outstanding work. Even your particular portfolio binder you gave me, I think that's a best practice for all the regions, how you presented the data to me. So, Dr. Braybrand, I know you inherited this initial work, but kudos to you as well for the dedication and the investment of additional staffing and resources to this work. I, in eight years being on the board and the conversation about closing gaps, this is what intentionality, data-driven decision-making and solutions looks like. So it's wonderful to see that many of us on the board, we've talked about that over the years, to see this work being done is outstanding. And the other thing I would just like to give a plug is, for our latecomers and the challenges that we have for students with interrupted formal education, I know, Dr. Braybrand, we've had these conversations that we need to look at multiple pathways for those students to have educational opportunities. A traditional high school setting during the business workday may not work as well for those students. And so giving them multiple options so they can get the most critical, important high school diploma for their career opportunities is, is gonna be important, and something I fully support. And finally, I just want to say that I will give the plug again, while we're sitting here with Project Momentum, please consider the merits of a Project Momentum model for our human ser, human resources and teacher retention efforts. Because what we know is, when you give strategic and targeted work into our schools, we can address any problem. And we have pockets of excellence, where no one ever wants to leave a school because it, just the work environment is so fabulous. And others where there's some challenges. And if you have a Project Momentum model, going in and having this kind of supports to help our school building administrators, working with the teachers as well, I guarantee we will also see similar results. So, thank you everybody for being here. Dustin Wright, my Old Creek Elementary Principal, thank you for your amazing work. And I so appreciate the shout-out for Little Run Elementary.
Anybody wants to comment? If not, then I have a question or two to Mr. Greenfelder. Before I do go to go-bags, I have a couple of board members, I'm not encouraging any more board member to sign up on the, on the go-back list, just the two. So how many, how many staff members directly work with you, Ms. Greenfelder?
I'm looking back at the brains of the operation. I want to say it's 55.
Fifty-five.
Or is it less than that? How many directly people do we have? I know it's 50-some, 57.
Fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven. Fifty-seven. I thought it was 55. There we go.
So 57 plus five EPs?
Yes.
Right, right. But under you, there are 57, under your supervision?
Under my supervision, there's 57.
Fifty-seven. In terms of dollar figure, what would be that? Budgetary?
I'll have to get, I'll have to get, I don't have it off the top of my head.
Okay, if, you know, if you could let us know, as, as an next step question. Okay, that is all that I have. Before I do go to our go-bags, and I'm gonna limit the go-back to a 90 seconds each. Sandy Evans and Karen Corbett Sanders.
So, thank you very much. As, as we're talking about the supports for schools, I did want to take a, I did want to take a bit of perspective here. I think it's important that we don't make the same mistake that we see other people making. That when they see a school on this list, that they somehow make assumptions. And this, of course, I know Justice High School very, very well. And I did just want to make the point, this is a school that provides a stellar education for all of its students. And so I do feel I need to make the point, academic achievement, English, level one. Academic gap, English, level one. Academic achievement, math, level one. Academic gap, math, level one. Academic achievement, science, level one. So in all of these academic areas, it is shining and doing a marvelous job. So I just felt I needed to make that point. And I'm sure that this is true for all, you know, virtually all, if not all, of the schools, that we are providing extra support in, in, in individual areas.
Thank you. I have Chairman Corbett Sanders to be followed by Mr. Strauss. I have Chairman Corbin-Sanders to be followed by Ms. Schertz.
Thank you Sandy for making that point because as you started and let's end with the affirmation that all of the schools are accredited in Fairfax County. And they are all academically accredited, every one of our high schools. The two schools that are challenged right now are two schools that are challenged because of the dropout rate and the metrics being very different than the other metrics. So I do want to reaffirm that. The one thing that I wanted to also address, and I'm glad Ms. McLaughlin mentioned it, was that we need to re-envision high school for these students because many of these students who drop out, they drop out not because they really want to drop out, but because they have other competing pressures on their time. And so in looking at reinventing the high school experience for these students, I would really like to see us do more with apprenticeships during the day where these students can earn money and be able to support, contribute to their family's finances and perhaps go to school at night. The other piece of it is that I would like to better understand the impact of when we moved the adult high school over to Herndon, it is multiple transfers on a bus for people from the eastern side of the county or the, the southern part of the county to get to where Herndon is. So I'm wondering if we have to rethink that decision, you know, we make decisions, we try it.
Don't take it away.
I'm not saying take it away, but it has had an impact and so do we have to do something else to ensure, you know, we're always talking about access and opportunity. So access to programming means that you have to get there by bus somehow, or transportation.
Okay, thank you.
Can, I'd like Teresa Johnson to respond to that last question.
Just to respond about adult high school, our largest site right now is the Plum Center and transportation hasn't been an issue. Our biggest issue really was Justice High School in that area and with the metro passes, we've certainly seen a lot more success. And we also have the Justice Night Program for adult high school. The other side of the county, I haven't heard that there are issues from the southern side, happy to explore that and see if there are concerns that hasn't been brought to our attention, but certainly happen to explore that. The majority of our kids, again, go to Plum and then we have the Herndon site and we'll also be looking at expanding that Herndon site because we're busting at the seams.
Can I ask a clarifying question? The justice pass, are adult students able to get that pass as well?
Not after 22. However, we do have the Justice High School adult night programming.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have Ms. Schertz next.
Okay, I'm going to get a couple of things that were still on mine. First of all, I want to say, I don't think we should be changing the boundaries, I don't, of regions. We just kind of did that and that was a lot of structural change. So we only did that like, what, four, three, four years ago? That's, that five years ago? Changing the boundaries of regions is just as bad as changing the boundaries of schools. So I don't want to do that. But can we go to slides 20, 24, 25, or 26? Just pick. So have you prioritized money or do you have money that you can prioritize to some kind of grants? Do you distribute money? I mean, the goal is hopefully, I mean, really the objective is to not have an MSAOC and not have, I mean, you, the best job in the world would be working yourself out of a job, that we don't have to do this and that we can move on to Project Momentum for special ed, you know, move through our, our student cycle. So are you directing money differently in these difference? That's one question. Do you have money to give things like teacher grants? This is the thing I've talked to you about, about what some other school districts are doing as a best practice and driving money to the specific classroom. That's the, that's the difference maker and why I think this has helped so much. Have we talked to the foundation, FCPS Foundation, about directing specific money in the teacher grants, which is the whole business of what FCPS Foundation is, is doing with the luncheon? Make sure you book your tickets now, that little plug. And the, the region visibility, I, I heard a lot of description about raising the region visibility within the region and that's the lens internally. That's all well and good, but I have been begging for both the superintendent and the regions to do the exact same thing in the community. You need to be going and doing town halls in the community, having this discussion on the outside about what's the connectedness of the parents to understanding what we're doing and to know what the regions are so they, they don't know who you are. I mean, and, and having parents understand really that you're the, you know, operational, you know, leadership for their schools is crucial. So I would love information on that if you've got it. And I guess that's maybe more than 90 seconds, but it was less than three minutes, so I consider it a win.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll do one through three and then let one of the big bosses answer the town hall one. So money, yes, we are very strategic about that. We make sure that individual schools have the opportunity to apply for grants, not only directly through OSS, but through the region, region offices. The regions are becoming more aligned in that area, so they offer basically mini-grants, which I actually co-fund with them. They not only have to apply for the grant, but it has to get approved by the collective group of the EPs for school improvement, the region office, and then ultimately myself and those principals, some of which are sitting here who've, who've received them and, and applied for them. Then they have to write a detailed response at the end of the year of what they use the money for, what result did they get and did it improve academic achievement? And if so, by what measures did they use? And if it wasn't an academic achievement piece, then what, what was it that they did? And 90% of them, 95% of them are all around academic improvement. So it's, it's a pretty tight process. It could be tighter, we're getting better with it. We're standardizing some things this year because that was kind of new for us. Last year was the first year I had asked principals to say, you need to justify why you want this and then show me the results of what we're giving out. Dr. Braybrand, Dr. Ivy, Dr. Duran have been extremely supportive of that. They, I give them updates on how that's going and, and what the money is going to as a, as an EP team within OSS. We look at it every month to see what schools are getting and how are they using it? And then it's the EPs are following up at those schools, but we are absolutely doing that. And it's a great idea. And I think it's been, you know, and maybe Dustin, Dustin can chime in for one minute. I know we're running short on if he thinks that's beneficial because I know elementary schools really do. And the foundation, we have not, that's a great idea and I will work with Dr. Duran to connect with that group and see how we might be more supportive of the work they're doing.
I just want to say, I'm just, the quick follow-up to that, this is the model that I saw at NSBA that I talked about probably three years ago. This is the difference maker, not just for us, but in other divisions. And I, I'm so proud that we're driving money through your organization down to the, the classroom because we are, this is the thing that is moving the needle. This, this project, this approach of putting the money in the classroom is making the difference.
Okay, Ms. Manning, you want to, you want to do-
I can respond to the comment, the question about family engagement and actually I've been talking to some board members, so I'm going to be talking to you about it, Ms. Schultz. But just, your question's timely. This morning in our RAS EP meeting, we actually held a collaborative data dialogue looking at our engagement survey results and really taking that Project Momentum approach, looking at the macro implications across all five regions, within regions, and then micro. You know, we have schools that are outliers in certain areas and so those are schools in the same way we want to go see what they're doing and how we replicate those practices in other schools. And then, you know, really figuring out what does this authentic engagement look like with our community? And, you know, you and other board members have said over many years, the community doesn't know who we are, doesn't know the function of our office and that needs to change. And so Dr. Ivy has certainly made it an expectation across all regions that we do this and we're, you know, it's probably going a little slower than we would like, but we want it, get it right. We want to do it in an authentic way and we want to do it aligned across the five regions, so.
Don't let perfect be the enemy of the goods.
No, not perfectionism, just a point.
Okay, thank you. We have Mrs. McLaughlin for 30 seconds as the last one for today.
Just quickly on, I think it was slide 21 where we were looking at, or it's 22, for the theory of action, I just, I really want to draw this attention to not just board members, but for the public who may have listened to this presentation. This, again, is what intentionality looks like in terms of saying, okay, what can we envision in terms of closing gaps, having Project Momentum work, but when you operate from a theory of action, now you've got a framework for success. And so I did not want that to go by without being mentioned because I do think it's a key piece. And so again, Dr. Braybrand, to you and your team, a theory of action, almost anything we tackle, I believe we're going to come into that success. And then just quickly about the presentation, so I made the joke earlier about anacronyms, Office of School Supports, of which you lead, Mark, is amazing. We need the public to know what it is. So in this PowerPoint presentation, go through and pull out every time it says OSS and put Office of School Supports so we can promote you, promote awareness. And this way, I think that the public, again, will have even a greater understanding of what Fairfax County is really doing for each and every student.
Okay, thank you so much. We have nine next steps to be posted. Let's just take a look. And I would like to encourage board members with your names on to take a look at the language. If you could enlarge the screen a bit for someone like me, thank you. Take a look at what you've got up there and then I'm going to start from 101 at the top and to see what the languages in order. Okay, we'll start with the top one, 101, is that-
Not only absentee, I would say in terms of the metrics. And then the second one, 109, in terms of metrics, metrics in the report.
Okay, we go to 110?
For sped, it's also what supports for sped in the middle and high school? It's two parts. It's, you know, what are we doing for middle and high school students with sped and how And the next one is how do we ensure equitable allocation of resources? When Region 3, Regions 2 and 3 make up 50% or close to 50% of the schools wi, and have the highest needs?
Okay, the 112?
Is there a correlation between the new approach design?
Is there?
Yeah.
Okay, 113, Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yep, fine.
Okay, 114, okay, thank you. 115, Corbin-Sanders?
It should be considering, consider providing daytime apprenticeship opportunities for students who may need to contribute economically to their households. Identify, and when Michael's up there, we'll talk about what we need to do at the state level.
And 116, Ms. Schertz?
Yes.
Okay, with that, yes, Ms. Evans?
On the last one, I'm trying to figure, teacher grants for, for what specifically?
Well, the whole model is directing money into the classroom. It's basically teacher grants, so.
But is this referring to some, to Project Momentum?
Yes. Well, we're talking about Project Momentum, so.
So to direct money to teacher grants, I, you know, I mean, I think they, they do have teacher grants, right? And so I think we need to be more specific on what we're asking the foundation to do here.
Well, I didn't think it was that complicated.
You're just, you would just add to teacher grants for Project Momentum? That, that's what your, that's what your advocacy is? A certain portion of the teacher grants would go for Project Momentum?
I would imagine that the goal of our teacher grants is to direct them in a prioritization fashion rather than just willy-nilly flack. So if this is where we're doing most work and these are the kids that are at the most risk or we have the greatest opportunity to move the needle, I, I think that we should share that information with, it's up to the foundation. The foundation decides where the grants go, but.
Okay, with that, this work session is adjourned. We'll take a 30-minute break for the final one.
Thank you. Let's go Nats.